Welcome.
Man, are we cool?
Kate, I miss you.
Baby. We live yet? Oh, no, we're recording. Good. For posterity, right?
All right.
I got no filter, Sarah. You're gonna have to shut me down.
Well, so I guess we'll call the order of the School Board Finance Committee meeting for December 9. I want to start just by welcoming Kristen to the Finance Committee and then welcoming back Leanne. Leanne, you were the Chair of the Finance Committee, right, for a couple of years?
Um, actually, it was like a couple of weeks, but yeah.
Awesome, cool. So I want to, I think I had said like 60 minutes for this meeting. I'm okay if that goes over a little bit. I do have a hard stop at 5:00. I don't know what everyone else's schedule looks like. But the two main topics that I was hoping we would cover today is just to get an update from Kate on the CRF, the Coronavirus Relief Funds and Spending. And then secondarily, just start the conversation around budget development. So I think according to Kate, they've already started talking about putting together a calendar. And I know those meetings are probably going to kick off if they haven't already. So getting some insight into that exposure really would be really useful. Leanne and Kristen, was there anything else you want to add to the agenda?
Nope.
All right, cool. Thank you. I will kick it over to you to start.
All right, so earlier today, not too much earlier because I kept getting delayed, I shared a document with you folks and posted it up on our website. So if anybody's watching this exciting program later on, they can go to the Finance Committee page on our website and they'll see this under the Supporting Documents. I sent it ahead because the type is so teensy, but I was trying to do like a one-page summary of each grant. And to give both a little bit of background on what exactly is in the grant and then where we are in terms of a spending update as of, I put as of Friday because that was our last warrant and our last payroll. And I do want to just start by not talking at you, but having you tell me if there are areas that you really want me to focus on in this, or if you just want me to do like a line item run through high level.
I'll give you my take and then Leanne and Kristen can can challenge that. I've already looked through the document that you sent previously. If Kristen and Leanne haven't, then maybe just go through sort of a summary of each. Otherwise, maybe just a sort of an overall summary and then an update if anything has changed since we put out the last communication. But Kristen and Leanne, what do you think?
I did go through. So sorry, Kristen, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
I would say I did have a chance to go through. I have questions and we can kind of catch them at the end of the conversation. So I don't need, you don't need to go through each and every one because I did go through, but like I said, I have some questions for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with what you suggested, Sarah.
Cool. See, Kate, maybe if you want to start just by going through what's what's updated since the last report?
Yeah, so let's let's take a big step backwards. And when we put out a communication a while ago, the communication was mostly about what had we asked for and a little bit about the parameters of the grant. So when we were talking about what's in the grant, what's it for, how does it work? Those things haven't really changed, although the nitty gritty of it, the details of it, we've been working out with the Department of Education in terms of timelines and documentation and what's expected for reporting out. So just to say that really briefly, we have this grant funding available to us for services and items purchased that are in our hands by December 30 or services that have been provided by December 30, so the end of this month. And the documentation of that can involve payroll registers, payroll time sheets for the personnel side or piles of invoices and receipts for the purchasing side contracts. And the other big piece of this, apart from the timeline, is the fact that the funds are not allowed to be used for things that we originally budgeted for in our operating budget. These funds were provided to give us extra support, supplemental support in the COVID pandemic environment to allow us to open and operate school safely. So when you look at the categories of spending, you're going to be looking at things that are going to be over and above what we would normally have budgeted for what we did budget for for our regular operating procedures, plus the extra that we put in for some of the COVID things we anticipated. These are above and beyond those things. So this first page is the CRF number one. It was the first grant that came out. It was broken into categories.
He started to interrupt. Do you mind just sharing it on your screen?
I thought I had it on my screen. You guys can't see that?
What I'm seeing is the agenda.
Oh, hello. All right. Let us close a few things here and try again. I've got too many screens open, guys. Sorry. All right, is that doing anything for us?
Yes, perfect. Awesome. And the tape is actually pretty big, so.
Yay.
Thank you.
The power of the power of PowerPoint. Okay, so back to what I was saying, CRF number one, and we call it CRF, it's Coronavirus Relief Fund. Everybody's getting their acronyms out, was broken into these categories that you see. And all districts in the state of Maine had the opportunity to to apply for whatever they might need under these various categories. So each one of these has a label of the type of expenditure. It's about a description of what we actually put in our grant that we were going to use that money for. And so what we're what we're using the the funds for. This first column right here is what was allocated to us in the grant. The second column in the blue is the money that's been spent as of last Friday. Next column is what's left over. And then there's a few notes on the right side here, which I think are maybe disappearing a little bit on my screen. Never really sure where the.
Nope, we can see the full.
Can you see the whole page? Okay, I'm never really sure where the sharing is ending here. So a couple of notes in case there was something that I wanted you to know about what's going on still with those amounts. You'll note that the biggest remaining balance, as I push up here a little bit, the total remaining balance that's unspent as of Friday is $300,000. The biggest chunk of that is in payroll because we'll have another two-week payroll on the 18th for substitutes and supplemental work. That will also include, and you'll see in my note, it includes the extra funding that we've provided for teachers and support staff to put in for extra unpaid hours under the two MOUs that we have with those bargaining units. And I will say that we've been receiving a very large stack of payment request forms, additional pay request forms. So people are taking advantage of that. And some really interesting and neat documentation of the kinds of work that have been done. And those will get paid out on the 18th. And we'll also have actually almost four weeks of supplemental substitute wages to go out, including payroll tax at Main Purse. So a good chunk of that, $200,000, is going to disappear into that category. I also made note that we do still have bills coming in for facilities, items, cleaning products, PPE, and some instructional materials. And all of those things have been designated as COVID expenses based on the fact that they are needed for either facility support or personnel support in a pandemic environment or instructional supplies. It doesn't actually state that in category C, but that was something that came out of conversations with the Department of Ed. Where we're using funds there are for not just, you know, a cart to push things around to different classrooms if you're if you're working in a different environment, but also the instructional supplies. And we may have talked about this before, but let's say you're in an art class and in the good old days in an art class, you'd have a selection of paints in the middle of the table and the kids would go on to the table with their paintbrush and they'd dunk into the paint. You know, altogether, they'd share and they share all kinds of things in classrooms, as I'm sure you know. Sharing is not a skill we're teaching right now. Sharing is a no-no. So a lot of additional instructional supplies, little consumable stuff, has been purchased in order to allow a child to have their own art kit or their own pencil case with the things that normally would be on the table to be shared. I think that's sort of the high-level piece. Maybe we should take a few questions and that might actually help drive other things that will come into my mind. What do you think?
Yeah, that sounds good. Leanne, you want to go first? I think you said you had some questions.
I do. I know that we had to allocate all of the money and receive all of the goods by the 31st. Does that hold true for the invoices, or do we have longer for invoices to come in for us, Kate?
That has been our most popular topic of conversation, actually, in the past two weeks because we don't always get invoices timely. We don't necessarily purchase something on December 20 and have an invoice in our hands on December 30. That goes particularly for the district purchasing credit card. We have two of those. And also Amazon, where we have a business account. We order a lot of stuff on Amazon and Amazon is getting paid, but we're not actually posting those transactions to the general ledger in UNIS until usually a month later. So the short answer to your question is that we do have a little leeway. The state has been told that they have to wrap things up by the end of January. I've heard a couple of different deadlines, January 15, January 27. The the big, the big rule is that you have to have the product and make the payment to the vendor by December 30. And it is the 30th, not the 31st, which is weird, but the the feds, or maybe it's the state, somebody's decided that the 15th and 30th of every month, regardless of whether it has a 31, that that's their, that's their end date for fiscal stuff. I don't know what they did with February. I didn't ask. But to your point, Leanne, yeah, there's going to be invoices rolling in after December 30. Hopefully not a lot. We're asking most of our vendors to get everything in to us. And, you know, as long as we know that the product is on the way and, you know, it's secured by our vendor, we might slide that that check through and hold on to it until we're sure. But it is, it's it's a touchy question because the timeline is pretty quick. The turnaround's pretty quick.
It is crazy quick. The other question had to do with the two areas that we had overages on on the expenses and it's, I think, categories F and G.
Yeah, let me.
Are we able to reallocate funds from other categories to cover that overage, or does that have to come out of general expense?
No, actually, you see, I put a little yellow banner at the top here. Most of our federal grants have a little bit of a float factor. As long as your overall grant total is expended and as long as your expenditures meet the criteria of the grant, there is an opportunity to overspend in one category and underspend in another. So as long as your net is zero. So for example, on the buses, I'm pretty sure that the cost, or rather, the vans, I'm pretty sure that the cost of fitting them out is going to be about $6,000 in my conversations with Eddie Dunn at Public Works. God bless him. Big shout out to Ed here. So I'm going to have $3,000 there that can go towards professional development. That's a very, you know, fine statement, but what we'll do is we'll make sure that we preserve sufficient funding in these other categories where we have extra. The other place where I think it's likely that we will have extra funds will be in category E in the extra pay, the additional staff hours category, just based on the the stacks of requests for extra funding that are coming in. I'm not sure whether we'll hit the full $100,000 mark that was allocated for that. But I also don't want to say that that's the case until the deadline arrives, which is Friday, for all those forms to be in. But to your question, an overage in one category, categories F and G, does not have to go back to the general fund. It simply means that what we'll need to do is to preserve that same amount to offset in another category.
And then the other is more difficult to ask, and it has to do in category E. I know that the feds, in their grand wisdom, only gave us until the 30th. But Corona's not stopping on the 30th. What happens and do we have enough room to support the additional staff that we've needed to be open throughout the process?
That is a really, really good question, and it's one that was tormenting us for quite a while. You know, there was a hope that they might be able to extend the deadline out in terms of spending and we could have allocated more funding to humans and less to staff. That did not play out. The good news is that I did a little bit of a budget analysis about six weeks ago to answer that very question because we know that come January, we, things have not magically changed. No one has waved a wand and and all of a sudden, everyone can come back to work and we don't need any supplemental subs. We're all fully aware that that's not the case. So I've done a budget-to-actual calculation on staffing. And for a number of reasons, one is normal payroll turnover, which we always have a little bit of savings, or most always. Another is some unfilled positions. Special education hasn't been able to fill a number of the ed tech positions that they were hoping to fill. A little bit of a perennial problem, but especially so in this environment. Bus driver positions where we budgeted for extra bus drivers and have not been able to find extra bus drivers and have been making do with what we have. And the substitute lines that we currently have funded, which isn't a huge amount, but it would be available to us for this this purpose. So adding all of those bits and pieces together, we do have sufficient funding to support the supplemental staff that we currently have in place.
That's great news.
It is. And, you know, we we had been very cautious and and I guess a little pessimistic at first when we hired supplemental subs. And I will say for the benefit of all of our viewers that I'm sure are going to tune into this at some point, that when we're talking about supplemental subs, we have a number of staff members who, for medical reasons, are unable to come to school physically. However, they are not sick and they are perfectly capable with the technology that we have in place of teaching it from home. So for example, if I'm a teacher at the high school and I teach social studies, I can be hooked up to a projector in a classroom at the high school. I can be online with the kids. I can be providing content. I can be, you know, accessing all kinds of web-based materials that I can share. I can teach pretty effectively in in a remote setting. My problem is that I do still have kids at school. So there are there are children in my classroom and somebody has to be there to facilitate their learning, to set me up on that on that big screen and to make sure that the the kids in the classroom have what they need and have adult supervision, at least to some extent. So the folks that we have hired as supplemental subs, for the most part, are doing a team teaching role in that way. They're the person on site managing students in school and they are teaming with a a teacher who is working from outside of the school, working from home. So just wanted to clarify that. And when we first hired those folks, we said, we don't know how long this is going to be able to go. And we we said to the folks who were teaching from home, we don't know how long this is going to be able to go. We can, we can commit to it till the end of we did the end of the semester, the end of the first grading period first. But just recently, we've said, look, nothing has changed. It's not, you know, it's not going to be an environment where doctors are going to say to their patients, sure, go back to school. It's going to be perfect. Have, you know, no worries now. So we did, again, work really hard to make sure we had the resources to keep those situations in place. And we have great subs, by the way. And I'll also throw in there that we we had conversations about what happens when we go fully remote. And I say when because there are times when we're going to need to go fully remote. We've already done it on small scale with one classroom or two classrooms. And and chances are, it'll it'll continue in that vein. Those subs will still have a role because they will still be managing kids. And in most cases, they've developed a team approach with the students that they're working with. And they're definitely, you know, part of that that classroom environment. They're definitely adding value and we've asked them to be prepared to to hang with us and their their duties might shift a little bit. But they're definitely, you know, a huge asset for us and we're really lucky to have them.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, questions?
Katie, did you have any questions? So Kate, we might want to table this until after you go through the number two. My question is more, I'm planning for the seemingly likely second round of funding that's coming. I know, you know, we don't know dates or anything like that or specifics, but I I know that it was just approved by the House and and looks hopeful for the Senate. So I don't know if you want to take that now or or table it until after the second review.
Well, I don't, I don't see a reason why we can't put that on the table. I think that my wonder will be I've seen in writing that the Congress, that what Congress is looking at, there is some portion of that funding that is indicated to be helping schools. That's a fairly vague statement. I don't know what's in the fine print.
Yeah.
And this last round, two rounds of funding came from the feds to the state of Maine, who then decided how to allocate it. So I I'm reluctant to be hanging my hat on any feeling of a guarantee that the schools will directly benefit
Yeah.
from this new funding approach. But that said, if we should get additional funding, we can certainly find ways to make use of it. We won't have the massive infrastructure investments that we've had so far. So I'm not sure how I see us spending $4 million. I'd really have to think about that really hard. But I can definitely see us spending, you know, another half a million on on staffing. And that's, you know, staffing, supports, and, you know, probably some sanitation. So if you want to shoot me a million, I I can spend that fine.
We can make use of it. Cool. Yeah, my my thought process on that was kind of twofold. One, you know, maybe I know the timelines for this were like really quick and you guys had to turn around an application and I think one of them was like in 24 hours or 48 hours, something like really short time. So I'm wondering if there's, and you may have already done this or know off the top of your head, but some work that we can do to say if funds were become available, here's what we're thinking of of spending them on and sort of socializing that with the Leadership Council and getting their feedback and input.
Yeah, it's interesting because, I mean, this kind of leads into what we'll talk about next in terms of the budget process. There, that was a big piece of our conversation kicking off Budget Talks with the leadership team. And we're we're kind of having this vision of, okay, here's the old way we do things. Here's the COVID way. And then here's the new, what we hope is on the other side of all of this.
Yeah.
And, you know, what do those tracks look like? We don't think that new is actually just going to be, we go back to old. So many things have actually changed and some for the better. We've learned a lot. And, you know, I don't, I think our leadership team is really being super thoughtful about what education is going to look like on the far side of this. So I think that ties into what you're saying, Sarah, is, you know, we might be making investments in areas that we wouldn't really have thought of prior to prior to this whole situation. And and certainly when we were writing these grants in the first place.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing I would add to that, too, is, you know, just thinking about the, some of the challenges we face during the budget cycle. Last year, asking for money from taxpayers related to COVID, which I think people were reluctant to do, assuming that we would get funding. And of course, at the time, we didn't know that. So we had to plan for worst-case scenario and then we did, which is great. But I think, you know, looking, and and there may be time restrictions or whatever, but I think looking into next year and trying to be a little, you know, planning it proactive. If there, if we do get money and if there are things that we can spend it, that would set us up for success next year, whereas we we don't have to rely as much on a tax base. I think that would be really beneficial and be beneficial for all of us to be able to stand in in front of town council, too, and say that we were proactive in planning for this and using, you know, the grants that were available to us first.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I know that's going to be a big piece of the of the puzzle. And, you know, there are going to be things that we can say already that, oh, well, guess what? You know, in our CIP, we're not going to be looking for floor scrubbers because we just got all the floor scrubbers we need. And, you know, sure, they're, you know, they have a lifespan, but we're.
But we did get, we did get Todd's shed, so.
We got Todd's shed, right? We have a shed. And, you know, we have, we have technology up the yin yang. And, you know, I don't really want to think too hard about what that's going to look like in five years from now, when all that stuff starts breaking. Vaughn and I are already thinking about a, you know, replacement cycle for these things.
Okay.
But yeah, it's definitely, what I hope for is for the feds and the state of Maine to have a pretty clear idea of what's coming and when and what the parameters would be before we have to nail down our budget proposal. And that would be so ideal. And, you know, we'll talk about that more when we talk about budget timeline. But for absolutely sure, and really what we've asked the leadership team to do, just to begin thinking about this, is is to have that kind of tiered conversation with themselves, like, and with their and with their staff and their leadership teams in their buildings, like, okay, what's what's old that we need to get back? What's new that we want to preserve? What is school going to look like if it's still, you know, super COVID and all of FY22? What's it going to look like if we're a little bit more back to normal?
Yeah.
So they're already thinking in terms of multiple scenarios. And I think in that process, you could easily identify the things that if there is federal money available, that that would be a great place to allocate that money. At least, that's my preliminary thoughts.
Yeah, no, that that sounds great.
All right, so so let's scoot to CRF 2 because mindful of the time, I'm already halfway in here.
And Kate, I just, sorry to interrupt you real quick. For Leanne and Kristen, if you guys have questions, just chime in because I'm not looking at the blue hand or whatever. So just speak freely.
Okay, thank you.
This is a very rowdy environment.
Yeah, we like to keep things fast and loose here.
That's right. Finance. It's a thing. All right. So this one, I I borrowed the the format from CRF number one to build a grid for CRF number two, because I think if you looked back at what we shared in terms of the application, it's in a different format. It's in the JEM financial system. And it's all kind of wordy and it's a, it's much more of a narrative and much less of a grid. So this is my one-page version, stealing the original format and just chunking it out in the same way. This is the second grant. This was the one that came sort of late in the day. And it's a lot more focused on specific items, more big-ticket items, I think. So like, this is where the shed lives, in increasing instructional space. More big ticket items, I think. So like, this is where the shed lives in increasing instructional space. And this is where those floor scrubbers live in improving sanitation, improving air quality is, that project is, uh, air quality, what's the word, assessment? Now, there's a better word for it. We have a consultant that came in to actually run through all the buildings and do air quality testing. And then purchasing actual air filters. Now, air filters, the kind that you have in your home or in a business, they don't capture virus particles. They're not going to save us from COVID-19. What they are going to do is clean the air and reduce allergens and reduce particles and, and improve air quality to the point where folks aren't going to be having quite so many other things going on, like allergies that mask themselves and pretend to be COVID or colds and flu that mask themselves and pretend to be COVID. So it's, um, it's actually a really neat infrastructure investment. And it ties in nicely to the whole public health piece. I sort of jumped ahead here. The first section is hybrid learning model. This is the second piece of technology investment. And this is specifically geared towards the audio systems in the classrooms. Most of this material is in already. You can tell by the amount budgeted and the amount expended. But that's going to be a really good bonus for us. It's, it's a huge bonus in the COVID environment, because when you're wearing a mask and you're trying to teach kids in a room and at home on a laptop, we're finding that vocalization is really difficult. Like right now, I'm not wearing my mask and it's great because I can shout into my laptop. But if I were in a classroom with kids, I'd have my mask on. And, um, so you have a, a layer of kids who have hearing deficits or are trying to learn to articulate language, young kids who are learning speech and vocabulary. And then you've got that second layer of just your normal normative kids and adults who can't hear one another because there's a physical barrier there. They can't articulate. So these are classroom audio enhancement systems, and most of those are actually in, they're not installed yet, but the, the, most of the equipment has made it into our hands. The outdoor space thing, we had some of that in, in CRF number one, but we really went to town on that in CRF two. And you see, I have a note there. We've actually been looking at, two vendors have offered us quotes on these sort of picnic table cover things. I don't know if you've seen those, but it's, it's actually like a built structure out of, made out of wood. Shingles on top and pressure treated wood. And they're actually really lovely. And we were thinking that we could install those instead of the tents that are out there or that have been out there and, and have to be taken in in the cold weather. And that we would have some permanent outdoor structures. One of the things that we're learning in this environment is that kids really thrive outside and the teachers really enjoy having an outdoor learning environment. And we've seen that, you know, in this small way with the Wentworth Garden, which is just such an amazing learning space. We've seen it in a small way with playgrounds. But kids really do enjoy being able to sit outside and draw from nature or sit outside and, and spend some time in the fresh air doing an activity. So that's something that I don't think will go away. It's kind of like what I was saying before, there are things that we've learned about teaching and learning that, that are really valuable lessons that we can carry forward. Public hygiene is a, is a, a super popular category. That's sharing water fountains and sharing bathrooms and things like that, that have suddenly become a little bit of an issue. We're trying to mitigate that because it's healthier for everybody, whether there's a pandemic or not. Jumping around a little bit, but I think, uh, again, I think I'll ask questions, ask four questions and that might sort of guide more of my speech to you.
I don't have any particular, Kate. Good summary.
I will say that this one is, um, uh, we've got a little more spending to do. Again, this was the second go-round. And there are some fairly big ticket items that we're still lining up. And that's why having that little bit of leeway on invoicing will be helpful. But we're pretty confident that we'll have everything that we need lined up and in hand and paid for. You know, so that the effective date of December 30 isn't an issue. And this is all stuff, not people. So less in the way of unknowns with stuff than there is with folks. Other questions about that? I'm good on this one.
Awesome. So, um, just to, to maybe wrap this up, Leanne, I, I wonder if, if there's a possibility for an upcoming like a communications, just to provide an update on this, maybe after December 30th, once we've completed the spend, just as, to tie a little bow on it.
Yeah, my guess is that it'll take me a little bit of time to, to report out to the state, make sure I hit their deadline and then turn around and be able to put it into layman's terms a little bit better for our team. I'm going to show you something that, like I have this, this little line to give you. This is, this right here, this is two monthly invoices to the state. Yeah, I mean, paperwork wise, this is insane because it's the government, right? And, you know, we love paper. Of course, it's all, I, I scan it all and then it's all in a PDF somewhere, which is lovely too. But, um, just my, uh, my worry is that I wouldn't be able to turn on a dime and then, and, and report out the first of January. But I would definitely be wanting to, wanting to be able to do it in the normal course of events as a second quarter report. With the second quarter ending.
I was even thinking like higher level than that, right? Like here are some like very top level exciting things that we've been able to do with this money. Like install sort of air sanitation and purification systems that are not just better for COVID, but are just better forever, for everything, you know?
Oh, well, yeah, definitely. I'm thinking of it in terms of a great big old financial report. But really, in, in terms of what folks in the community would like to know, I'm sure, like a picture of an air filter that says, hey, there's one of these in every classroom now. Or water bottle, water, water bottle fillers instead of your kid putting their spitty mouth on the water fountain. Yeah, I mean, it, it might be better to think of it in terms of what'd you get for your money? And isn't that cool?
And I know this is pretty dry, so. This is super short notice, um, but I got a note from Kelly today that we don't have a topic for the upcoming town newsletter, which we would just need to have something turned in by Friday. And maybe it is just something short and sweet to, this is what we've been able to do so far, but we'll have more information coming, or we could wait until a January newsletter. Because that would get that broad reach to the full community, who I think is where you're really targeting, Sarah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I would take advice from the communications committee, but I, I think the, the goal of putting out the FAQ, and I think with this is to make sure that people know that it's like a public process, that it's transparent, that we're not doing any, like there are very specific rules that we have to follow and guidelines and that we're not doing anything tricky, like, and, but also call attention to the things that are going to have long lasting benefits and, and that by doing them, we've actually saved town money. Because there's things that we probably would have had to do that we were able to do with this funding rather than tax dollars. It's kind of the gist that I was thinking.
If you want, Leanne, and, and if you're the person who's likely to be working on drafting something like that, I can send you this PDF as a, um, I think I've got it in Excel actually, because that's where I do everything, of course. So that you could cut and paste and maybe just pull a few little examples.
That would be great.
And that way, you could decide what you thought was, was a sexy read for the, the community newsletter. Instead of it just being like, oh, here, read this really dry two-page creative stuff. Okay, so I'll, I'll do that, um, like right now.
Kristen, are you on the communications committee too? Perfect.
And the, the Excel version of this has a couple of backup tabs with some line, line item accounts, but I think it'd be easy for you just to pull language out of individual cells.
And Katie, I'll get something drafted and get it over to you and Shannon to look at.
So you're going to aim for Friday?
I know I'm an overachiever, right?
Don't stress yourself. Wait, I was saying today's Monday. Do you, don't stress yourself out by doing that. If, if it's in January, it's in January.
It's a, it's a good question though. I mean, is it, is it good to just say, maybe it's like a teaser, or maybe it's like, hey, you know what? We've been spending away on really cool fun things. Here's some, you know, here's some highlights and look forward to a more in-depth report once everything is done.
Leanne, I'm happy to help with, um, another set of eyes on that, if that's helpful.
Diane, thank you so much.
I like that idea, Kate, of a teaser, because I think that to do justice to some of the stuff that you've been able to do, we can't do that by Friday.
Yeah, well, and I, I don't think you want to be flip about anything. You want to be thoughtful about what's going to resonate with the community. And, uh, you know, we might be able to go into a little bit more detail or, or have some more photos of things in action or, you know. I have a picture of, uh, of some sort of backhoe taking apart the parking lot at the bus garage, digging a hole. That's pretty exciting. But it might be more exciting to actually see like something with walls.
If we can get pictures of kids outside, that would be awesome.
That would be awesome. Maybe, maybe Todd's garage is not the thing we want to put on the front.
I'm already making jokes about parking dump trucks in poor Peter Hayes's driveway, so. You don't want me to be in charge of the outreach on this. I'm a bad person.
No, no. Awesome. I think, uh, that was a good, uh, Leanne or in Katie, any final thoughts on CRF?
Oh, this is great.
Awesome. So for the budget development, um, do you actually have a draft calendar, Kate?
Uh, we don't yet. We have last year's calendar and we have, well, actually that's not true. Diane put together a very nice sort of new version of the old calendar, which kind of took the elements of last year's calendar and plopped them into the correct dates and, and timeframes for the new year. But the conversation that we had today at the leadership team kind of changed that up a little bit in terms of what they were hoping to accomplish. Just really high level in December last year and, you know, typically, December is the time when I'm sitting in the dark building the salaries and benefits worksheet. And the leadership team is working with their teams in their buildings to figure out what their level services budget is going to look like. So there's not a really big public face to that piece. We did have the staff listening sessions in December before the Christmas break last year. And we felt like, you know, those really, those are awesome. Those are the, the sessions when the superintendent and I and some board members and, you know, various other leaders, the building leaders would gather in a, a quiet place where teachers could come and bring us their thoughts and ideas. Amazing feedback loop, really, really nice. But in this current environment and with the stresses around us with our, with our staff, the leadership team felt like they might want to tackle that in a little bit different way. And so their recommendation, again, this is all stuff we talked about today, so it's pretty fresh. We haven't really fleshed it out. But they, their thought was to have more a formal building-based process. Rather than, you know, I'm Kelly Crosby and I'm bopping around classrooms, checking in on people and getting the temperature of things and talking to my leadership team and casual conversation. It's going to need to be more formal, right? Because people are, are more programmed and scheduled and we're trying not to be in each other's space. More than we need to physically. So, uh, suggestion was that they could do some Google meets, Google hangouts with their staff and be able to gather more information and then bring central office into it towards, more towards the end of that process, because they have the capacity to do the more informal stuff. So then the big target date for our internal process is the Martin Luther King Week. The middle of January. And that starts two weeks of individual meetings with building principals and department heads to nail down their level services budget. Uh, also during that time, we have our team bringing any new proposals that they have. So the investment piece that we talk about separately. Um, and, you know, this year, we're, we're thinking that that's not really going to look like new and innovative stuff over and above what we need to do to get through. The conversation we had today and this, uh, I think I'm going to throw this back to you guys a little bit. This, this leads into the, the nature of our relationship with the town council. The, um, collaboration that we engaged in last year where we felt as though we were working towards a common goal and then COVID happened and the goal got derailed. The process got derailed. From my perspective, it was very painful and uncomfortable at the end of that process.
Throughout the whole process?
Well, you know, I think we got, we got to, to March and, you know, the leadership team had done their thing and had done good work and had brought a proposal that met those original goals to the table. And so we're all going yay me and then all hell breaks loose. And, um, it was very demoralizing for our team. It was demoralizing to have to deconstruct an appropriate and responsible budget. It was demoralizing to have to do that in an environment where administrators were quite frankly, being demonized as, you know, trying to fire people and, um, trying to cut personnel and making the wrong decisions. And, you know, it was a, um, quite an uncomfortable battle, I think, for our leadership team. And so I'd, I'd really love not to do that. And I don't think we have to do that this year because we're not going to be surprised. We're not going to be taken by surprise by our, our fiscal environment, by our, our communities' needs and worries and wonders. Um, and I think that the takeaway from that conversation with our team was, we need a couple of things. We need to, to have a new goal and we need to be realistic about it. So that leads us to, you know, what's the relationship with town council finance committee? How are we going to try and, you know, front load some of those conversations? We need to have a goal that we can meet and be comfortable with and be confident in, whatever the restrictions are. Whatever the parameters are, let us do that work. And then, and then secondly, you know, if, if things go off the rail, off the rails, you know, staying collaborative, staying true to our mission, staying trusting of one another's decision-making. That's going to keep us up low.
I appreciate that feedback. I think that's really helpful in thinking through this year. I've thought a lot about this year and I don't have any fully formed suggestions or opinions yet, but I do want to do things differently. And I think that the way that we've gone about it in the past, and I almost, I almost like hesitate to change anything too much, right? Because like we've, we've passed the budget successfully on the first shot the last two years, but it's been a really painful process. And, and I don't want to put anybody through that, uh, and especially not what we went through last year. Well, I think one benefit is we're dealing with a different town council, so I think that's a, that's a positive. And the town council finance committee in particular, um, I think are really eager to collaborate and work together. I want to move away from this notion of collaboration. And I don't say that, I don't mean to say that in a sense of we shouldn't talk to them, we should surprise them and just show up at this meeting with this information and, and kind of otherwise, like do this cloak and dagger approach. I mean, we can, let's chat with them, let's have a conversation. But at the end of the day, they tell us the goal. You guys put together the needs-based budget and then it's, it's sort of accepted. Or, or if they have questions on it, ask the questions. But it's not something necessarily that is we're working on in collaboration with them, because we don't. That's just like a fact, right? We don't really go through this collaboratively with them. And so I think when we say that it's collaborative and we have these joint meetings, the perception is that they're involved in this process along the way, and that just really hasn't been the case. And so, again, I don't, how to, how to put that into practice, I don't know. That's just some of my, my early thoughts. It would be great if we could be in a position, in my opinion, and I would, you know, really love to hear what Leanne and Kristen think. But it'd be great if we can get into a position where we're treated the same as the other departments. So, you know, Sandy or in Kate go to a meeting similar to the head, you know, the chief of police would do or that Todd Susa would do or whoever and say, this is, this is what we need. This is what we need to operate. Take it, ask questions, poke holes in it. Um, but this is what we're telling you we need. And then at the end of the day, they take all of that information together with the other departments and come back and say, okay, you need to cut by X amount. And then you guys go away and you do that work. I'm making it way oversimplifying it, right? But I think that we've almost overcomplicated it over the years by introducing all of these other steps. And really, if we just go back to the basics of what's our role, what's their role, maybe it would create less confusion. Thoughts?
I think that's, that's a really interesting observation, Sarah, that, you know, we, in, in trying to be collaborative, we may have introduced too much putting the oar in and, and stirring from, from all parties. So that's interesting. And our new finance chair on the town side, Mr. Kuchy is, is very interested particularly in process and who does what and at what point, you know, who's the authority over what. So I think, I think he would be very interested and receptive to a conversation about those, the delineation, the lines of, of, of authority and, and who brings what where. I would say that it's my understanding that the board provides a budget to the council. So you can't, you can't really avoid that. It can't just be like, we're a department of the town and so department administrators show up at the table. But I think you can still operate that way. You can still say, you know, sure, we're just another branch of the town. Here's what we're doing. And we're describing it in the same way that public safety is describing their needs.
Yeah, that's, that's almost what I mean though, right? Because I think you're right, right? That's the way that our charter, first of all, the policy is, we don't really follow it anyway. I don't think we have, based on like the timelines and the sequence. Um, so that probably needs looking after anyway, but like, if, if it's our job to present it to town council, then, so we have that meeting. And then you guys still, like, there's still that department meeting. So that's what I mean. It's almost like redundant and confusing. And like, why are we having all these separate meetings? Shouldn't we just streamline that?
Right. And we've always had that wonder about, you know, the, we're sitting together collaborating, we're talking about goals together. We're setting goals and we're, you know, we're sharing information about one another's budgets and one another's needs. And then we turn around and we have this, you know, you present your budget to the town council. And, you know, they're, they're on the big stage and we're in the little chairs. And, you know, it, it, it's always felt a little peculiar trying to mesh those two things. And I personally, I would love to be a little more clear-cut and just have the council say, here's what we need. Get it done. And we bring it back to them and say, we did it. And not have folks trying to, um, or feeling like they have to be, have more expertise and understanding than they really do.
I think it's an interesting thing for me to have this conversation now, because in the last few days, I've been thinking about the comprehensive plan. And I've been thinking the exact same thing, that the relationship between the board and the council is, it's interesting in why we're so different from how they're treating the library in their process to add onto their building. Why is this, our new school so different for them? Like, and why aren't they offering us the same financial assistance that the library gets? They see us very differently. And I don't know that it's a great thing that they see.
That's a good point.
You know, like, it's just, it's been in my mind, so it's interesting that you're
Yeah.
You're bringing it up.
Sarah, have you had any, uh, conversation with the town at all?
Haven't. I wanted to wait and chat with you guys first and get your thoughts.
Yeah. I'd be interested to know how John sees all this.
Yeah.
Because he's a very different person from Peter and, you know, and from Dawn and some of the other folks that we've sort of, we, we've built these relationships with. I think he might have, have a little bit of a different worldview as well. And it, it's quite a different committee if you look at the dynamics of the, the finance committee this year.
Yeah, Leanne, what do you think?
Um, I think what you raised is a really good point. At times, it has felt that the familiarity between the two committees has almost invited council to come in and behave very differently than they would anybody else. We've worked hand in hand, so they feel, um, the word entitled is strong, but they feel it okay to question why do you need X number of staff when other people are doing this? So I like the idea of our creating, this is our needs and then presenting it and keeping almost a line in the sand between the two teams. Kristen, you nailed it. There is a very different philosophy between how they treat other groups and their asks and how they treat us. It's not given the same respect or, um, thoughtfulness. It's always a challenge. And I've wondered if it's because we've tried so hard to be really close with them. Not saying we should not have a good relationship, because that's not it. I think we need to definitely. But it would be interesting to see if we came back and were clear of, this is the goals. This is what we need to operate and to operate successfully. And if it had a different approach and a different tact.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, the way it should work, right, is Diane and Sandy and, and Kate should come together and say, this is what we need. And town says, well, Tom just told us what he needs and combined with what you need, that's too much. You guys got to cut some. Okay, go back. Diane, Sandy, Kate, go back and cut some. And then, you know, we go back to them and that's, you know, we get so in the weeds, I think, and the public then for becomes distracted almost because they don't even know what's what, because there's so many meetings and so many conversations. And any way that I think we can streamline that, I think is going to be the benefit of, of everybody. And I want to be really clear, like, I'm not saying we shouldn't talk to them and be open with them and partner with them. I just don't think it's a collaboration.
Yep. That's interesting from the perspective of history, because I'm the old lady in the room here. And we, we built the relationship with the town council finance committee initially because we felt that the decisions that they made that affected the schools were arbitrary because they didn't know what impact it would have to say, hey, schools, cut a million dollars.
Yeah.
Right? You know, we're really sorry, schools, but we don't have that kind of money. So just, you know, go, go away and come back with a smaller budget, right? So that statement's been being made for 20 years. And that's just only because I've only been here 20 years. I'm sure it was made 20 years before that. Go away and bring us something smaller. Right? So the collaboration piece, interestingly enough, hasn't changed that. It's still, go away and bring us something smaller. And what we hope the collaboration would do would be to give the town council and town leadership a footing on which to stand to say, oh, wow. You know, maybe we shouldn't make that decision. Maybe we should actually understand more why the resources are needed and therefore support that.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think that's quite the outcome that we got. I think the outcome that we got was still, go away and make it smaller. But now we're going to tell you how to do it because we know more about your business. Um, you know.
It's, it's a good point, though, I think, because there needs to be a balance that it's not that we don't lose that. We don't lose that sort of needs base and understanding. And so I think part of that's on us to make sure that that's communicated effectively in the presentation. But I think you're right, Kate. That's, that's a good point.
And, and again, I'm not, I'm not discounting any of the things you're saying, Sarah. I agree with you.
No.
Um, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that we had a goal we were trying to achieve in behaving that way with that team and creating that collaboration. Um, and, you know, to some extent, we achieved it because we have people, I think, people on the council who do understand a little bit more where school budget money goes and what it's used for. But I, I think that the, uh, I think someone used the word entitlement that came with that knowledge hasn't been helpful to us.
I totally agree with that. It's an interesting thing. That is the downside. We are still just being told to cut and then now they have an opinion on where. But, you know, to your point, Sarah, I think we need to do, we definitely need to make sure in the process that there's still that opportunity for us to advocate. So if they do say you need to cut a million dollars, where we get to say, okay, but these, so you know, these are the consequences for your cutting that money. I mean, we obviously, at the end of the day, have to do what they tell us to do, but they should know what they're, what the fallout is.
Yeah. And I, I would so much like to avoid that conversation being harsh. You know, and it's hard because you feel like you're, as a, as a school board or as a school leader, you feel like, you know, somebody's wrapping you over the knuckles with a ruler and saying, bad girl, what are you doing? It, it doesn't feel very, uh, adult and, and respectful when you're in those circumstances. But at the same time, I think it's, it's important for us to stay calm, say, okay, this is what it is. It's a financial decision. It's not an emotional decision, decision. It's not, you know, the, the favorite thing is, well, you can have a police officer or you can have a teacher. That is so not the dialogue that I want to be in.
No.
Um, it's, it's not helpful. So there's that balance between doing our job, which is to advocate for our students, to advocate for the resources that we need to provide effective teaching and learning in a safe environment. And then also to, you know, to acknowledge that there are restrictions, that there are, that there are environmental factors, financial environmental factors that are going to restrict our ability to have all the funds that we would like to have. Enrollment's going to be an interesting conversation. That was part of our conversation this morning.
Yeah.
We've, we've been having this whole conversation about, you know, buildings getting too small and the town growing and, you know, the kids are coming. And then you get COVID and you get, oh, well, maybe I won't send my kid to kindergarten.
Right.
I'll hold him back a year. Maybe we'll do homeschool. So our enrollment numbers are very weird. And, and, you know, we talked about that this morning with the leadership team. Like, how on earth are we going to be able to know? Our projections were right on up until the pandemic. And we're, we're very confident in that. And then, and then, you know, now we're like, oh, okay, can we still bank on that? And when does it turn around again? Do we get this huge bubble that went forth in a couple of years when everybody says, hey, everything's great. Let's all go back to school?
I was actually thinking about that for next fall and what kindergarten classes are going to look like. And when we have, you know, five kindergarten classes in each one of the three buildings.
Right. Last year's kids and this year's kids, you know? It's an interesting problem to have.
Yeah.
Sandy's got his hand up.
Yep. I don't want to turn too quickly here, but I, I think we're reflecting on last year. And, and I, I would like to reflect on, you know, the relationship between the administrative team and the finance committee from the board. Um, and again, when I bring this up, it's no fault of anybody. And I sincerely mean that. Everybody had good intentions, but what felt a little backwards, and again, I come from a different district in the past and different budgets. What was hard for the administrative team was we made a decision, whether it was right or wrong, to reduce staff, right? And we quickly heard from the public. You quickly heard from the union. And things really began to spin at that point in time. On one hand, the work that the finance committee did, it helped in the long run because it, it reduced the amount of staff that had to be riffed. In doing that, and I don't think it was intentional, and I can't speak for the whole administrative team, but it felt like you, that the school committee, finance committee kind of saved the budget, saved the people. And the administrative team, I think, felt like, wow. You know, we were just kind of thrown under the rug, not intentional. It just, it's the way the process kind of unfolded. Now, at the end of the day, I applaud the finance committee because I think you were able to find other ways to reduce the budget and not reduce staff. That being said, I just wonder if there's a way to reflect on that process from last year and see if we could do it so that the administrative team, maybe upfront, if, if the marching orders is do not cut staff unless you absolutely have to at the end. And maybe that's how we could start this year, because it just felt a little backwards. And again, I, I haven't been here long enough to know if you did that every year, but it just felt kind of quirky to me. And I'm just being, I'm trying to be helpful, but I'm trying to.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I say the same thing I said to Kate. I appreciate that feedback. It's honest and I think it's fair. I think that's maybe discussion that we need to have early is what, what are our goals for, for this year, right? Because I guess I would say, of course, we should do whatever we can not to get rid of staff. But if our goals are different, then, then maybe that's a necessary evil. So I think it's, it's a, we need to be aligned on what the goals are early on. And then I completely agree with you, Sandy. It's, it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that whatever decisions we're making are aligned to those agreed goals that we have, really, that, that you guys have, that you tell us what you think is right.
And if I can just add one piece to that, I think it would also be really helpful that if decisions are made, that they're joint decisions and that they're not, that neither one team or the other is being held responsible for them, that it's decisions that we are making together. If it's, we're doing this at Board Directive when it's not actually Board Directive, I think that could sometimes create a little bit of a, a little shift. So as long as we're working in collaboration, I think we can do exactly what's being asked for.
I agree. Okay, I realize we're over time. I have one other thought. Do you guys have a couple more minutes? My only other thought, and this might be a little provocative, is that we don't use the word or we don't frame ass as investments this year. I wonder if that's going to be a little bit of a trigger, given the economic situation. I'm not saying we don't ask for, for things that we need, but I'm wondering if maybe there's a different way that we can frame it. So that it's not seen as we're investing during a time where people are just kind of scraping by.
It's a really good point, Sarah. I think the word investment implies, you know, a strategic add of something that you haven't had before. Um, and, you know, in, in most cases, if you look into the, into the fine print of what we've been calling investments, it's, you know, adding a program for kids or it's adding. it's, you know, adding a program for kids or is adding staff because of enrollment or it's adding staff because of special services. So there's, there's definitely, if there's a change in, in, in personnel, for example, where we need more personnel, there's definitely a different way to frame that. It's not really an investment. It's a response to student needs.
It's a need, yeah.
To enroll and or what have you. But that's a really good point because you're right. The word investment implies that, you know, we've got everything we need and now we're doing an add-on.
Right.
And, and in, in some cases it is, you know, in some cases it's, hey, unified basketball, what a great investment. We didn't have it before. We probably could have lived without it, but damn it, let's do that, you know? But, but in most cases, I think this year, I don't think we're going to be looking to, I don't think our leadership team, I, at least I hope after our conversations, that I don't, I don't think they're, have a pie in the sky approach here. I think they have a, how are we gonna figure out what we need to carry on? It's more the wonder. With a lot of variables, a lot of question. But yeah, I, I think, I, I think the word investment should be like a little taboo. We'll find a new label.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Um, any, Leanne, Katie, I don't know if she's still there, any final thoughts?
I am. I had to turn my video off. I literally missed everything you just said. So I'm assuming the word we're not using is investment.
Quick takeaway for you, yeah.
Yeah, that's all you need to know.
Investment implies growth and opportunity and we're just trying to hold the line.
Yeah. Cool. I will try and connect with John and just have a conversation with him about what his thoughts are for this year. And then is there any need to meet again before Christmas or should we set another goal to meet in January?
From my perspective, I don't have any sort of compliance stuff that I need you guys to do. I've been sending you warrants. And Kristen, if you just still have a little bit of time, I can just spend a minute with you. We were gonna meet after this. But if not, we can also reschedule. Just to know how the warrants work. But January is fine for me. I'm gonna have plenty to keep me busy this month.
Okay, good.
Are you sure?
Awesome. Well, I guess I just wanna end by saying thank you guys. Oh, go ahead, Kristen.
Can I just request that whenever we do, although I guess Leanne and I will know, whenever there's a calendar available so we can build our communications schedule? So the sooner the better, if anything.
The budget calendar?
Yeah, whenever you
Yeah, yeah, good point. And that's something that we have on our, on our leadership team's schedule for the next couple of weeks, just to carve out a little bit of time to make sure that we can nail that down. But the initial part of the process, just so you know, Kristen, is, is pretty internal. Where there's not like a public-facing piece until we get into later in the process. February, March. So we have a little bit of time as far as the communications outreach piece. But we do wanna keep people posted on what we're doing.
I created an FY22 folder, Kate, in our school board drive. I'm wondering if maybe you could just pop in the draft, just so Kristen and Leanne can kinda see the rough details. Cool.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. I, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate the honest and candid feedback that you guys shared. I think it's only gonna make this process better and I hope that you'll share back with the leadership council that, you know, we're you know, there are things about last year that I also was not happy with and, and I take responsibility for that as, as chair and, and we wanna do better. And I think we want to collaborate as close as possible with admin and staff. And maybe pull back on some collaboration from town council, so. Cool. All right. That's it. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.